She ready? Okay.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good afternoon and welcome to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners' Work Session this June 25th, 2024. This afternoon will be presented with the 2025 Proposed Budget Summary from our Finance Department. With that, Bill, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. Today we'll be presenting the FY25 Proposed Budget Summary, and I would just like to take a moment to thank the budget team, the county staff, who put hours of work into preparing this and getting us to this point, and also the Commissioners for meeting with us several times as we've gone through this process and we continue to, and will continue to meet through budget adoption. And then, of course, the County Manager on her leadership and working up with this team and making sure we're all on the same page. So with that, we're going to jump right in. Okay, so this is going to be one of the more unique budgets that we've ever presented. This is the first year of our biannual process, but we're heading into this budget season with a little bit different starting point. As we usually work through this, we have the board-approved impact items. These are agenda items that the board approved during the year. During 2024, the board approved $16.5 million of impact items, and that's just for the general fund alone. So those are items that have reoccurring impacts on future budgets, and those have to be considered first and foremost before we make any additional considerations. And we also included handouts of those impact items for the general fund for each of the board, and this copy of this presentation, as well as those handouts, will be posted on the website by the end of today. And just to kind of touch on some of those major initiatives that are included in the impact items and then also included in the proposed budget, we have the annual increases for the costs associated with the public safety improvements, including overtime. And as the board knows, we improved a new step in grade plan that takes effect the first pay period in July. It's a 25-year plan, and it does have a significant impact in future budgets. And then also, some of the challenges that we faced within public safety regarding vacancies has caused overtime to increase, so we're also including those adjustments as well. And the board has been very consistent as far as the continuation of annual merit and step in grade, both for the sworn and non-s sworn employees, so that continuation is also included. So one of the things that's important to note with that is we do our annual merit and step in March of each year, so as that takes effect, you have the next year, the full year impact of that merit or step to be considered. So those are some of the items we're going to walk through as well. And then we have increases associated with annual maintenance contracts. Those are primarily within the general fund in the information technology services arena, as well as the Sheriff's Office. And then one of our unique items for this year is we have an increase into our Claims and Liability Fund. This is our self-funded insurance, so we handle a lot of the claims within the county themselves, but we also buy insurance policies for larger claims as well, including cybersecurity. The cost of those claims and insurance has increased over the last several years, so we will see an increase associated with those. And then one of the other notable items that we saw this year is magistrate court increase. This is related to HB 1017, and it's regarding the increased cases that will be heard by the magistrate court for any squatter cases that move forward, so we have that increase as well. And then also, one of the board's biggest priorities in the last several years has been continuing to work on the reduction in the water transfer. And we are going to be moving from 6% to 5%, and just to put a number to that, the 5% will be $13.8 million is what we're budgeting. Now, obviously, that is a percentage of revenue, so we will see where that calculates out once we close out fiscal year 2024. Okay, so we want to just talk through some key dates, and we'll have this in here at the beginning and as well as the end. Kind of walking through our schedule, we have all of the budget requests due to the Finance Department by the mid-December. We work through those and prepare summaries of those for the Commissioners, as well as the public. We vet those and make sure that everything is on par where it should be. All documents are submitted, all justifications are submitted, and then, and we presented, we're presenting the budget at the work session today, but at the end of March, we also presented the proposed budget as it stood at that time. And then we are going to advertise in the Marietta Daily Journal on June 27th, conduct our first public hearing on the budget on July 9th, our second public hearing on July 16th, and our third and final public hearing on July 23rd. And just, I know we're not talking necessarily milage, but those dates will also coincide with the milage public hearings as well, so each night, each meeting, we will have two public hearings, one for budget and one for milage. Okay, Commissioners, do you have questions?
Well, I want to ask the Chair, do you want him to go through the whole proposal, or do you want to ask, do you want us to ask questions?
You can ask questions as he goes.
Sure.
If you go back to the backup page, to the overview.
Sure.
I see that the total is 16.5, but could we have, have it broken down as to what each line item, like you said, 13.8 million was the reduction equivalent to the 1% reduction in the water?
Yes.
Can we see what the total cost is of these other things that have already been approved to equal up to that 16.5?
Absolutely, it's included in your handout. We gave you the complete detail of every agenda item, the department, the justification, and the dollar amount that totals to the 16.5. So yes, we absolutely have that included, and that will be part of the post on the website as well.
Anything else?
Yes, there's a lot there, but yes, the detail is included.
Okay.
So we'll touch on some of those handouts as well, but yes, Commissioner, that is there, and if you have any questions about any of those, please let us know. We're happy to meet and talk through those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, so we're going to dive right in into some of the high-level summaries, and then we're going to get more detail as we go. The governmental fund types, and we're going to break down, there'll be a slide that details out what all, all the funds that included in this total. The 2024 adopted for the governmental fund types was 898 million. The total amount that we presented in March was just over 1 billion. The amount that is being proposed is 961 million, and we're going to break those down in detail. And then again, for the business types, we also walked through that, is the 302 that was adopted, 322 that was being requested, and we're proposing adoption of 315 million. So that brings us to a total, if, if the proposed budget is adopted as presented today, that would be 1 billion, 276 million. Now, one of the important items to note on that, within those budget requests, included 382 new positions, full-time positions countywide. The request that's being proposed before you today includes five positions. Three of those five positions are BOC-approved impact items. Those are related to three positions related to the Osborne Community Center, which was approved via an agenda item, and that center is projected to be completed in 2025, so those positions will be created as a result of that community center. The two additional positions that are being presented here are, the first one is for the Sustainability Fund, and that is an environmental programs coordinator, and then a water engineer. So that is a total of five positions. The detail of those positions are also included in your handout. Okay, and as we said, here's the detail of the governmental fund types. So this is going to include our general fund, our claims funds, and this is actually broken down into three funds. This is our health fund, our claims and liability fund, as well as our workers' comp fund, our fire fund is the next fund, hotel motel, 911, Cumberland Special Service District 1, Cumberland Special Service District 2, Six Flags Special Service District, the parking deck, CSBG, Law Library, and the Streetlight District. So again, what we have here is the amount being requested is the 1 billion, 30 million, and the amount being proposed is the 961 million. And you can see the increases there as we walk down the list. Most of the increases are coming within the general and fire funds, and we'll have detailed slides on those to break down that request. So the general fund is proposed to go up 40, 41.3 million. Our claims fund is projected to go up 4.3 million. Now, that is being driven by a couple factors. The claims fund is a 3% increase in our health cost, our health insurance cost for our employees, and then also the increase of settling claims, county claims for any property damaged vehicles or so, other things like that, as well as purchasing that insurance policies. And then the last major increase that we see here is 2.5 million, that is in our hotel motel tax fund. Okay, that is simply driven by revenue collections. And just as a reminder, that is split between the Galleria and the county. The Galleria receives 62.5% of our collections, we receive 37.5%. Now, what we do with our collections is we use that to support the debt service on the stadium bonds. So again, the more we bring in for that, the less general fund dollars that have to be allocated to that. So it is, it is a win-win for the county, but it does increase the budget overall because you're going to see the hotel motel tax increase, and then the transfer into the general fund also increases that. So sometimes of those increases, because you move between funds, does increase it more than once. One other point of note on this slide that I do want to touch on is we, we removed the employee charge for the parking deck. And I just, as a report for that, I know you all see the month reports, we do have a slight decrease in that budget, but that fund is performing very well. So we are seeing cash increase in that fund, which is, the idea is to identify or establish a capital reserve that any parking deck cost can be covered by the parking deck revenue. So no general fund dollars to subsidize the parking deck are anticipated in the 2025 budget. I just want to pause real quick and see if there's any questions on this slide, but again, we'll have details on both the, I'm sorry, on the general fund, the fire fund, and the 911 fund. Yes, Commissioner?
I do have a question. Now that Mabelton is online and they have taken over the South Cobb, I'm sorry, the Six Flags Special Service District, can you just walk us through, explain how that's going to work?
Sure.
And how it will change these numbers?
Absolutely, so we will still collect taxes for 2024 and 2025, and then I believe in 2026 that they will transition over and begin taking over that service district. So we will, in 2026, I would anticipate you're going to see that significantly change. We will no longer have, the property taxes will come to the county in 2026, so it is important to note how we handle that. There is bonds outstanding associated with that, so in 2024, 2025, as well as 2026, we are more than capable of covering those, and we are exploring options of early redemption to look at any possible savings because we do have cash on hand, and we want to make sure we utilize that cash on hand to cover as much of that debt service as possible. Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions on this slide? Very good. Okay, so then we get into our business-type funds. So I do want to touch on these. These have a mod, or an increase overall for the business-type funds of $12.7 million. Most of that increase is coming from the water fund and well as the transit fund. The water fund, the increase is really being driven by two factors. It is being driven by water purchases and sludge handling. So that accounts for 4.7 of the $5.2 million increases, those two lines alone. The rest of the increase is small operating increases, as well as a new personnel roster snapshot. So that just accounts for any change in vacancies, as well as healthcare and pension costs for employees. The transit fund has a $7.2 million increase, and that is primarily driven by the new operator service contract that we have with transit. And just to kind of share with you, the general fund does subsidize transit, and there is an increase in that. So the general fund subsidy that was budgeted for 2024 was 17.4 million. That is projected to go up in the proposed budget to 19.6 million. Now, transit went up 7 million overall, so general fund is only covering a portion of that. They're using some of their local match dollars to offset some of that increase in the operator service fees, so the general fund is not picking up all of that cost. And then the golf course fund, this is again simply a revenue driver, is performing extremely well. We've been able to pay down some of the outstanding loan between the general fund and the golf course. We've seen significant improvement in this ever since COVID, and it has sustained that improvement since then. We were very leery to increase this budget because we want to make sure it was sustainable, but it has been consistently outperforming since COVID and continues to do very well. It is weather-dependent, so good news is we haven't had any rain, bad news is we haven't had any rain. So it's looking a little, looking a little rough, but it's performing very well. So the overall increase is 12.7 for the business type, and the total budgetary increase is $76.4 million. And again, the majority of that is coming between the general fund and the fire funds. All right, and we're going to get into the general fund detail. All right, so.
Excuse me, Bill.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Hey, Bill, I'm not sure if you're able to answer this one, but on the water fund.
Yes.
The adopted and requested, does that take into account the increase in the water fund that's coming?
I'm sorry?
Does that take into account the increase that is needed in the water fund for the, for our monthly water charges?
So this takes into account based on current rates today. So we work very closely with the water department to establish what those rates need to be, and then we work with them to establish that revenue projection. So this does not count any stormwater utility because that has not been decided. This is to operate the water system as it exists today. Any change to that would have to come back before the board for consideration, and then the budget would have to be amended depending on the outcome of that decision. So again, this budget is simply operating as status quo today.
It's my understanding as well that the stormwater ordinance, once it's adopted, it creates a framework for the stormwater utility, but it would not be implemented, I believe, until next year.
Sure. Yeah, and obviously, that is the board's decision, but we have to prepare as if it were to continue as is today, which is what you see before you. Very good. Thank you for the question. Okay, so I do want to touch on this. General fund is really driven primarily by a couple factors, the expense request that you've seen, as well as the revenue that we have available to us and where we want to go with those revenues. So as we kind of walk through this, the largest category is property taxes. Now, just to be clear, this is not all property taxes that you'd pay on a property that you own. Part of this does include title ad verorum taxes. So I just do want to point out that the property tax revenue line is going up $32.9 million. 3 million of that is related to title ad verorum. So again, not the milage rate per se, but title ad verorum tax. Now, that does leave $29.9 million that is generated through property taxes, and that is simply based on digest growth. So the revenue that you see before you today is assuming the current milage rate that we had last year, but I do want to put a caveat on that. So one of the items that you should be aware of, the prior year digest, 2023's digest, had a gross increase of 15.7%. It's a net of 10.49%, that is after exemptions. The digest that we will be considering for 2024, which is the basis for 2025, had a gross increase of 8.52%, so down from the 15.71% that we saw prior year, and the net increase was 6.18. So that is again, down from the net increase that we saw in 2023 of 10.49. So we are seeing positive growth. We are seeing that growth beginning to slow as we move forward. So this is by all accounts good growth, and that is positive for us, but again, it is slowing compared to what we saw. I think what you saw is a peak in 2023, and you're starting to see that come back down to more normal levels.
Excuse me, Bill, can you differentiate between the gross digest and the net digest?
Absolutely. So that, that 15% that we saw in 2023 is what the values increased, but then as a prime, as a homeowner, you have a homestead exemption. So in the general fund, if your value increased, you don't pay any additional taxes with the homestead exemption. So that exemption goes up, keeping your property tax bill for the general fund flat for those homesteaded properties. So that's where we say the growth in the overall value of those properties increased 15.71% in 2023, but the net to the county was 10.49. And again, the 2024 impact of that was a gross increase of 8.52. After you back out the exemptions, the net increase that we see is 6.18.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Yes, I do have another question.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to follow up to those numbers, Bill.
Yeah.
Because this seems drastic.
Yeah.
But what has it been in prior years? I mean, what is the average?
Sure. So one of the, we'll give you the overall, it has fluctuated, so we saw bigger increases in 2022 and 2023, and we can give you the history, maybe a 10-year history if that would be helpful. We can provide that in the handout and also post it on the website. But I will say the peaks that we saw were 2022 and 2023. 2023 was the best, the biggest peak that we've seen, and then you're starting to get back to more of that normal level prior to 2022, 2023. Now, what we do is typically budget around a 3% to 4% net increase is what we do to be conservative, so we do want to keep that in mind. So when we have that, it is something that we have to keep in mind as we move forward. And if we were to continue to say, see that downward trend, you've got a 6% in '24. If we're at 3 and 4 for '25, we would expect that trend to continue. But then again, you're lost, if that trend does continue, then you're lessening that in 2026 and so on. So we do have to be mindful of that. We've seen a lot of different areas of that have an impact in other areas of this. You'll see the property tax has slowed, but also with interest rates high, you're seeing refinancing slow significantly, and that's going to be your intangible recording fees, your deed recording fees. So there's other revenues that are very much tied to these. So, and they do kind of tug and pull on each other based on if one moves, several move. Okay? Any other questions on that? Okay, good. All right, one other point is we had some revenue reclassifications this year. This is at the recommendation of our auditors, so you'll see some of these numbers look a little different. The first line I do want to point out is the intergovernmental revenues. So you see in '24, we adopted 3.3 million, we're proposing 7 million in 2025. Now, the reason for that is that is related to the jail fees that are paid from any municipality that houses inmates with us. We're reclassing those from fines and forfeitures to fees, which is in the intergovernmental, because anytime a municipality pays us dollars, our auditors would like to see it in that line versus fines and forfeiture. So that is more of a cleanup at the auditor's request. So that doesn't have an overall impact, it is simply moving those dollars. And then the other one that we saw is you'll see a decrease in miscellaneous revenue. It was 8.6 million in 2024, it is down to 2.6 million. Now, the only reclass that we made here is we do receive an annual payment from the Braves of 6.1 million. That was moved out of that line and into our charges for services line. So those are simply the impacts. But I know I have several of these listed, and we kind of touched on the property tax increase of $32.9 million. That means if property taxes went up $32.9 million and the general fund increased 41.3, all other revenue sources increased $8.4 million. So you can see it is, the primary driver of this is property tax-heavy. And then one other point to note is this, that $41 million revenue increase is a net number, because remember, in 2025, we will begin losing part of our insurance premium tax to the city of Mabelton, which is about a 6 million, 5 to 6 million dollar negative reduction on our revenues. Any other questions on the revenue slide? Very good. Okay, so as I said at the beginning of this, this was one of our most unique budgets. Usually, we kind of start with a clean slate in the first year of the biennial. This was a little unique as we walked through it. So as we started at the beginning, we had $16.5 million of impact items. These are already approved by the board throughout the year, and then we had a personnel or employee roster update, and we take that every year. We had some very significant changes in this, and let me explain why. So we had a $20.9 million increase by taking the new personnel roster update. The reason that we have that is, yes, we have the annual impacts of merit step in grade, we have the annual increases in pension and healthcare, but the county has been successful in filling a lot of our positions. So from April 1 of 2023 to April 1 of 2024, the general fund filled 67 vacant positions, which had a very significant impact in these numbers. And then also, we had the areas that we did not, were not successful in filling some vacancies in our public safety area. So we saw some challenges there, and I know that was one of the reasons the board addressed the step in grade, but we have seen increased overtime due to the high level of vacancies within public safety. So that, just that alone, no, really, basically, we're adding three positions to the general fund, but that personnel roster update does not include those. So between those two numbers alone, the 16.5 million and the 20.9, that's 37.4 million of the 41.3 million dollar increase. That is 90, over 90% of the increase is for those two sections, impact items and employee roster. The remaining increase is simply due to contracts and insurance. So again, no new programs, a total of three new positions within the general fund, and then you're looking at simply BOC impact items, employee roster update, and a few changes in contracts. The last piece of that that I do want to point out is you'll notice the contingency within the general fund did increase. That is part of the BOC impact items. Obviously, just as a reminder, we added $1.5 million to contingency for the All-Star Game to be prepared to make sure we deliver outstanding service for the All-Star Game and that the people who attend that are safe. Any questions on the expenditure slide for the general fund? Okay. We have a little new slide this year, staying on the general fund, just give you a little bit of a different breakdown. We talked about the impact items, the employee roster, but I wanted you to see where the dollars really went for this. So again, overall increase, $41.3 million. 25.5 of that went to public safety agencies within the general fund. That is all public safety agencies. That's not just PD, sheriff, that's anything in the public safety umbrella outside of courts. So that's 61.76% of the overall increase is going to, is being driven by public safety. And then we have, working down the list backwards, we have transportation, 5.2 million, or 12.57%. Now, one of the things I do want to point out is if you look in your handout, you'll see transportation. Transportation, as a department of, Department of Transportation, did not go up 5.2. What I did with this number is it's the increase that transportation has, plus the increase to the transit subsidy. So I just want to let you know, as you go and look through those numbers, it's those two combined, because we're trying to look at the global picture for these. And then the judicial suite of services, all of the court systems, had a $4.2 million increase. Now, we talked about magistrate court as some of that, the HB, that was, the House bill that was approved, the rest of these have no increase in operating costs, it is simply a personnel roster update, increase based on them, their ability to fill the positions that they have been approved for, as well as the increase to pension and healthcare. And then you can see how it falls off pretty quickly. We've talked a couple times about the self-funded insurance increase of 1.3, and then community development. Again, community development is simply a roster update. So no, no new services, no additional costs, other than simply a roster update. And then all other departments that are not listed here had a total increase of 4.1 million or less, or 10%. So just a different take on this. Any questions on the slide? Okay. Very good. Okay, moving on to how do we fund our stadium debt associated with the stadium, the Brave Stadium? This is actually improved by $100,000 compared to last year. I will say our budgets are conservative, and I would expect the actuals to be better than what is shown here. But at the end of the day, you can kind of see how these are broken down, but at, after you take into account the $2.6 million that the battery pays in property taxes, that generates a net positive to the general fund of 1.9 million, which is enough to cover for the first year both the police overtime, as well as the circulator. So if you remember, when we gave our annual Braves update a couple years ago, we hit a milestone two years ago, actually, we hit, we covered all of the debt service. Then it was last year, we covered all of the debt service in the circulator. We are now to the point where, based on the budget, and I would say we're probably going to hit it in '24 based on how everything's performing, you are looking at covering all the debt service, all the circulator, as well as the PD overtime associated with the stadium. So again, this continues to improve as we move forward. So again, this continues to improve as we move forward. Any questions on this as we move, as we walk through this? There is a couple of things to note. You'll see some decreases in some areas. This is simply based on how we wanted to adjust the funding. The biggest one that you'll see is in the Cumberland Special Service District 2. We actually have a slight decrease in property taxes. The reason we did that is simply to, as we're going through the COVID impacts, we wanted to make sure we covered those appropriately, but we do adjust for those each and every year. So for example, we, we're currently bu- we budgeted in 2024, 2.8 million of hotel motel taxes. That came in above 3 million. So what we did is peeled back the amount that we had to pay on some of the others. So we are making adjustments as, as we go through these. And the ultimate goal is to have the, as little general fund dollars go towards this and related activities as possible. So again, we are continuing to see improvements, but just want to pause for questions on this one. Very good. Okay. So the other one we're going to spend some time on is our fire fund. This is a little bit unique compared to our general fund. You notice a lot, a lot of the categories in the general fund had some bigger dollars in the, in the, in them, outside of property taxes. Fire fund, almost 98% of the total revenues, the total budget, comes from property taxes. They do not generate many other revenues. They have some charges for services as their next biggest category, but most of these are very small in comparison as we move forward. The reason that this is important is I have this note on the slide is the negative cash position. So this has been an area of focus the county has had the last several years. From 2015 to 2020, the fire fund would go negative in cash in March of each year. And then from '21 to '23, we hit a milestone of trying to improve upon that, to improve our cash position, because it is one of our ratings categories, ours, our liquidity and cash position at the end of each year. So we moved it to May. This year, we will hit negative cash in June. So we have continued to improve upon this. But one of the things to keep in mind is at the end of May of this year, we had 5 million of cash on hand in the fire fund. There's 25 million of encumbrances, basically an IOU that is outstanding in the fire fund that will come due. Now, the reason that's there is we had to change the way we ordered some of our apparatus. We had to order it in advance because of the delays to receive that. So when those are delivered, you will have a large payment go out the door. But that was to help keep pace with the apparatus replacement schedule. Okay, any questions on the fire revenue side? Very good. Okay, fire fund is, as we walk through these, just one of the things to point out, you'll see an increase in the personnel. This is related to the 25-year step and grade plan that was approved effective Jul- this first pay period of July, as well as the impact of prior year merit and step and pension and healthcare. Now, one thing to note with this, as we talked about some of the, you know, the 67 positions the general fund filled. Fire fund is not in that boat. So we talked about the challenges with police, also not in that boat, still experiencing high vacancies. So we're hoping the step and grade plan addresses some of that. But as of April 1 of 2024, they had over 100 vacancies within the fire fund. And that is driving an increased need for overtime. So the overtime budget was increased 2.1 million, which is reflected in that personnel number. Okay, and then last part to note on this, most of the other ones are relatively flat. Their capital schedule does fluctuate a little bit, so you saw a slight decrease. And then the contingency at the bottom is, is there to address any potential capital needs that come out, come to light during the year, as well as the potential of filling those 100-plus vacancies, vacant positions. Because just so you know, any vacant position is budgeted at 50%. Once we have an officer or firefighter in that role, obviously they're now at 100% plus benefits. So that is our standard practice of how we address all vacancies. So if the step and grade plan is successful and fire sees a reduction in their vacancies, there will be an associated cost with that. So we want to make sure we are prepared to address that cost. Any questions on the fire fund? Very good. All right, moving into the 911 fund. This is also a self-supported fund. It does have a revenue limit of $1.50 per line set by the state. We did see an increase in this several years ago, and we saw the budgets adjusted correspondingly. But what we're seeing now is kind of some challenges with that is we're kind of hitting that plateau. If that revenue isn't growing significantly, and it is, it is capped. So we do see some slight revenue growth year over year, but it is not overall, overall that significant. They had a significant increase in their filled positions. So again, within the public safety arena, 911 was very successful. They filled 13 full-time positions from April 1 of 2023 to April 1 of 2024. And then their major increases resulting from those filled positions, as well as the impact of merit and pension and healthcare. So most of the overall budget remained relatively flat. Sherwin, did you have a question? I'm sorry. Okay, moving right along, we have our capital projects funds. This is probably our most unique slide, just because it's, it's rel- it's not talked about a whole lot, but is where a lot of our capital project, any capital project outside of SPOST takes place. Now, the general fund does have 12 million associated for capital. And, but these are more of our longer-term projects that takes, take place over multiple years. So the very first line, you'll see the stadium capital maintenance. The county has a 50-50 split with this between us and the Braves. We contribute 1,440,000 in 2025. The Braves match that amount. That amount goes into the capital, stadium capital maintenance trust fund, and only can be drawn down based on approved expenditures related to capital improvements and replacements for the stadium. And then moving down the list, this is our capital projects fund. This is a very, are very generically named, but it's kind of our catch-all for all capital projects outside of SPOST and that are not water. Most of the increase here is related to information technology service projects such as GIS, cybersecurity, mobile data computers, printer, printer and PC replacement, as well as the advantage financial. So one of the things that we are watching with this is the advantage financial will have to be replaced in future years to go to a cloud-based system, and that will have a pretty significant price tag. It is something that to be mindful of as we move forward, is that we are beginning to fund this slightly. It is something that we could consider for SPOST in the future. So, because it is a multimillion dollar replacement. So just, that is something that we have budgeted currently. And then our water, our ENI and water system development, this is where all water capital projects take place. The biggest change here is the way we changed our depreciation. So we went ahead and added depreciation in here for these funds, and that is a 41 million plus up. Now, here's the thing to keep in mind, depreciation is not a cash out. So it is something that budgetarily we see an impact for. But to make sure we're accounting for our water system and the replacement of that infrastructure depreciation, we wanted to add in here to show that impact as we move forward. But again, that's not a true cash out expense. So as we kind of walk through those, that's just, you just keep in mind, we have the 101.1 million in water RNI and the 29.1 million in system development. 41 million can come off the total of those two numbers, because it is simply a depreciation accounting, accounting adjustment. Any questions on this? I know this is a little unique with the depreciation of the water funds, but just wanted to make sure we're good. Pretty good? Okay, all right, we're going to hit on schedule for the second time. Just to kind of keep in mind, we got this out here, so June 27th, today, we're presenting. Uh, I'm sorry, June 27th, the millage, the millage and the budget advertisements were run in the MDJ. And July 9th, we'll have our first public hearing on the proposed budget and millage. July 16th, we'll have our second on the proposed budget and millage. And July 23rd will be our third and final public hearing on the budget and millage, as well as the anticipated adoption. Any questions on dates? Very good? Okay, now I do want to touch on this, and this is also more of a, a guide for y'all, is what we included in your handouts and what will be available to the public. In your handouts, you will have a position detail of the five positions that are requesting to be added in the 2025 budget. The budget detail by fund and department, that's going to break it down for personnel, operating capital, and so on for every department, as well as the detail of any transfers between funds. And then the impact items. These are the BOC approved agenda items that have the 16.5 million impact. So those will all be included in your handouts. And if there's any additional information that you would like to see, please let us know. We're happy to provide you that. And then just to give you a quick update of what is being posted on the website. So this year, we prepared a budget binder for each of the commissioners. And we had three revisions to that. The final version of that has been posted on the website for the public to view. And that is a high-level summary. The numbers are very close to what is being presented today. As we go through, there's always a little bit of balancing as we walk through that, but there's no significant changes by any means. And any, any changes that have been made to the budget binder or to what's being proposed has been communicated with the commissioners. I think the last budget binder did not include the sustainability position that has been added and shared with each of the commissioners. If there's any changes from what is presented today, by the time we get to the next public hearing, we will make sure to communicate that to both the commission as well as the public, so they're aware of any changes that are happening. So that way, when they get to final adoption, there's no surprises. We know exactly what's being in there and what has been amended. Okay. All right, so with that, any questions from the, the board?
Any questions or comments for Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just want to reiterate your thanks to your staff and include you. Thank you for the amount of time spent in preparing for today. And also thank you for the budget binder. This is the most detail that I can never recall receiving prior to us updating the budget. And it was very helpful in explaining a lot of the decisions we're making and the decisions we made that are impacting this year's budget.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So not seeing or hearing any more questions, we'll adjourn this meeting. We'll be back here tonight at 7:00 PM for our general board of commissioners meeting.
Thank you.